The Fledge, please. Dr. Muller, could you leave us the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as a whole.
May there be silence for the men and women in the armed forces. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a quick announcement to make. April 27th, the town of New Milford will be having its first annual trash bag. That'll be at Youngsfield Park. We have a great group of volunteers that are assisting with the creation of the event. Laura Flake, Tammy Bass, Leslie Roy, and Jamie Larkin are all assisting putting that event together. And I wanted to come down and cordially invite your committee to the event. It'll be at 10 o'clock, and it'll finish up around 3 with some food afterward.
What's the date again?
It's April 27th.
April 27th.
10 o'clock, 10 to 3, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Can I ask permission to buy the what's a trash bash?
So, a number of our community members have been talking about cleaning up the streets. And so we thought for Earth Day, seeing there was not an Earth Day event, that we would all gather down at the park and map out areas that needed to be cleaned up throughout town. So that's what the event is.
They're not specifically to the building front, but...
No, sir, it's townwide.
Well, I do ask it.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Walter?
Megan Bird, Bird, please.
Good evening. I am not happy about what I have to say tonight at all, but I will say it anyway. Because I think it needs saying. Megan Bird to Carlson Road. Over the course of your budget presentations, the joint deliberations, the joint presentations and the deliberation meeting that you had on your own, there were a total, with the exception of the 28th, I think it was, because that meeting was not fully available on video, so I could not go back and verify the public comments that day. But for the other meetings, there were 13 public comments made. Of those, one, just one stood out and asked for the Board of Education budget to be reduced to a zero amount. Four were about absolutely other topics, completely. The planner position were two of them. Economic development was one or two of them as well. Eight of those 13 comments came out in support of putting back the mayor's recommended cuts, not taking further cuts, reinstating the budget as the Board of Education had passed it. Instead, this town council, with the exception of two members, thank you, Dr. Muller and Mr. Bear, unanimous, with the exception of two members, decided to approve an additional three-quarters of a million to cut the Board of Education budget by over a million dollars. And once again, again, we find ourselves without enough money to even fund the cost of salary increases and benefit increases combined. Once again, which means it will come out of programming again. Our students will be hit again. They have been hit this year. If you've been in schools, you know that. I dare say most of you have not, with the exception of a half an hour to be into a classroom for some joyous event. And I thank you for volunteering to do that, that is important. And I do appreciate that, but you need to see it all. You need to spend a day in Sarah Noble's office and tell me that we don't need three principals in that building, three vice principals in that building, because we do. They get called out through the day, nonstop. They're run ragged. The teachers are run ragged. We are losing good teachers. God only knows how much it costs just to place an ad, to hire a new teacher, to bring them in, to vet them, to background check them, to train them, do all of their paperwork, have them here for a few years, and then send them on to another district where they can make more money and they're appreciated more, and they're not fighting for their job every year. It's sad, the state of this town. And it really, really makes me very sad. But I think what maybe just completely lost, just taste in my mouth, was the fact that we asked for public comment after and couldn't be said fast enough, that's adjourned. People couldn't stand up and put their coats on fast enough to get out of this room and not listen again to what the public had to hear. And I think that that's really shameful. Then I saw the MOU on the agenda for tonight, which was not made public. The MOU itself was not made public. I do have a copy now, thank you, Mayor, but I literally got it as you all did probably when we walked in this room. I understand it's something that needs to go through lawyers, I get that. But to put it on an agenda as not just a discussion, but also possible action, when the public does not see it first and cannot speak in any knowledgeable way to it, I think is also a disgrace. So I ask you to consider not making any actions on this tonight and rather go ahead and discuss it and wait until the public can come back and make public comments on it after hearing what you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Tammy, please.
Hello, everybody. My name is Tammy McEnery. I reside at 33 Sterling Drive in New Milford. I just want to say, to be completely transparent, that I am the Vice Chair of the Board of Education. I am also very heavily involved in the PTO here, PTO leadership in our town, both on townwide and in individual schools. But tonight I am here to speak to you as a parent of three children in this district. I have three children who attend three different schools. One of my children has pretty severely special needs and the other two are flourishing because of the dedication of our schools. And I want to speak a little bit about what happened here last week. I'm very disappointed and extremely discouraged. I wanted to be here on Thursday, but I was actually running a PTO event to raise money at Scaticoke and we actually raised quite a bit of money at that event. But I did watch the entire video proceedings. It was very upsetting. I really truly thought in my heart that you guys would do the right thing. I thought it in my heart that you would do the right thing and I wasn't worried at all about not being here. So when I watched that tape, it was really, really upsetting that a million dollars was cut from our budget. The Board of Education, these wonderful people who dedicate so much of their time, we worked collaboratively to bring forth this budget to you. We brought forth a budget that we felt was honest and responsible. The Board of Education cut more than $450,000 from what the superintendent proposed to us. Some of those cuts were heartbreaking. But we compromised on items and we worked together and unanimously passed this proposed budget. And I couldn't be more proud of the work that we did as a Board of Education. No town council members came to any of our budget hearings except the mayor. And in your deliberations last week, no one offered any suggestions on where they thought we could cut $1 million from our budget. And while I completely understand and agree with the fact that you do not have line item jurisdiction in our budget, it would have been nice to have known that you found some things in our budget that you felt that we could have reduced our costs. Nobody offered any of that. I believe, and I am speaking on behalf of myself, that your cuts are unreasonable and irresponsible. The $600,000 increase over last year does not cover our contractual obligations and expected utility increases. This means we do not simply start at zero. We will have to make additional cuts and we are still trying to recover from cuts made by town council last year. If we have to cut a million dollars, this is going to affect our students directly through programming, through reduction of teachers, through higher class sizes. And we have problems in our schools. We have behavioral problems in our schools. We have disciplinary problems in our schools. And we need every single staff and teacher in our schools to be doing what they're doing. I'm in these schools all the time and I will tell you, I see it firsthand. And again, I invite you to please come into our schools, contact the superintendent's office, come in for a tour of our schools so that you can see our facilities, you can see our students, you can meet our teachers. I encourage you to do that. The Board of Education also collaborated with the town two years in a row to help you balance the town budget by offering funds from the BOE budget back to the town. This was not an easy task, considering the massive cuts you made months earlier. And when you realized the $1.2 million in ECS and other funding from the state you weren't expecting, the town offered to pay back $0 to the Board of Education after we had graciously given you money to help with the financial problems that the town was having, $0. We also came to the town to offer ways to reduce health insurance expenses and worked hard to make that happen. Thanks again to other very dedicated people on our Board of Education. Yet here we are again, big cuts and no solutions. And I sincerely hope that the Board of Finance will realize the unfairness proposed by town council and restore our funding. Otherwise, I fear for the future of our students, our schools, and our towns, and I want to share one last thing with you. Today, I volunteered at Scaticoke pretty much the entire day working in our book fair, which brings in quite a bit of money to our school and puts much needed books into our students' hands. A teacher came in and purchased more than $130 in books for her classroom library out of her own pocket. And she does this pretty much every single year we offer, and multiple times a year when we offer book fairs. She does this because she wants to offer new and exciting books to her students to encourage them to have a love of reading that she has. She's an amazing teacher and I can offer many examples of other amazing teachers we have in our district. So when you think our teachers are overpaid or complain too much or have a good thing going and should be simply happy to have a job, please think of these types of teachers and know that many are leaving our district for higher paying jobs in neighboring towns. Other towns are investing in their children's education.
Tammy, I've given you five.
I'm all done. And it's about time that we find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Michael Barnes, please.
Michael Barnes, 17, Sullivan Farm. This body's heard some very hateful comments recently from members of the community that have little and no idea what they're talking about. Like 21st century Puritans, they sling false and hateful allegations against their neighbors, hoping to get them silenced and symbolically burned at the stake. They don't care whose reputation or business is harmed with their threats. All for what? The crime of possibly listening to someone who disagrees with their political agenda? An investigation into getting people to speak at a campaign training event turned into a communist call to action from the Democratic Socialists of America. Why? One possible speaker previously worked for a group called Act for America, a group that calls for increased security from foreign and domestic terrorist threats and the preservation of American civil liberties. Sounds innocent enough, except ACT has been listed by a political enemy as a hate group. The speaker, a gay man who conducts nationwide campaign training, said he came out publicly and joined ACT after a radical Islamic terrorist killed 49 people at a gay nightclub in Orlando. And he wanted to fight against such acts targeting gays. "The moment that I came out, I never received so much love and I've never received so much hate at the same time," he said. The hate was from the left. The truth is, is that ACT is not a hate group at all. It speaks out against terrorism targeting gays and against female genital mutilation, honor killings, and child violence. The hate label was affixed by a far-left political action group known as the Southern Poverty Law Center. The SPLC labels everybody who doesn't agree with their politics as a hate group, including the Israeli Defense Force. They publish this list to foment hatred and drive donations. If you speak out against Sharia honor killings, you make the list. If you're a gay Republican, you get special attention because according to their intersectional views, all gays have to be Democrats. Nobody should consider them a reliable source of hate groups since even President Obama's FBI removed them from their hate crime resource list. Why? They're the number one promoter of hate in the country. That is how they make their money, promoting racial, religious, sexual identity, and ethnic hatred. The SPLC is an anti-conservative, anti-Christian hate group that the media have given pretend legitimacy to. One glance at their 990 tax forms is a reminder just what a fundraising superpower it is. How powerful? The SPLC has amassed nearly half billion dollars in debt to spew their politics of hate, hundreds of millions of which it keeps in offshore accounts. Yeah, that's a legitimate organization. Consider this: Should this body issue a proclamation against white supremacist terrorism, you would be lauded. But should you condemn radical Islamic terrorism in the next sentence, you will make their list. Should you condemn the physical abuse of women, you would be lauded. But should you condemn female genital mutilation in the next sentence, you will make their list. The fact that the party of these modern-day local Puritans is holding a similar campaign training event a few weeks from now doesn't seem to be a problem. Are they expecting protests because their party leaders and event presenters have not really denounced horrendous policies like antisemitism and infanticide? Of course not, because we don't believe and wouldn't accuse our neighbors of such things. So why don't they afford other people the same respect? So the next time you hear words of hate and vitriol against their neighbors from these ill-informed, modern-day Puritans, you should picture the strings being pulled by their master puppeteer for the sake of profit, the SPLC. Instead, they should look to the example set by this council. You have your differences, but you disagree in a civil manner and manage to work together for the betterment of New Milford. It isn't about us and them, it's about we. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Greg Mullin, please.
Greg Mullin, 39, Meadowwood Drive, New Milford. I'm here to speak about Agenda Item 7D, the BOE MOU. In my opinion, the town should not enter into a memorandum of understanding on behalf of the taxpayers with any group that would defer from the budget referendum results, especially when it would affect an operational budget. There's a long precedent of the town paying for BOE capital items through town-backed bonds, offsetting their budget with town's municipal, sorry, medical reserve account or more recently directly in the town budget and even making hard choices, cutting its own budget to cover ECS shortfalls. Any taxpayer money returned from the state in the form of ESC funding outside of the revenue plan in the budget should go back to the general fund or partially fund their capital reserve. The State Board of Education has said any municipality that is not an alliance town can adjust the Board of Education budget by the reduction. I have the attached state letter for your records. Let's not work against each other, but work together to find solutions to make local government and education more efficient, something I believe this current administration is trying to do. Additionally, selling assets or spending down reserves that protect our credit rating and provide a financial buffer for fiscal emergencies is a one-time fix and not smart planning. It is my opinion that the ECS is not Board of Education money. Taxpayers must pay regardless of whether income or property taxes are returned. This money helps offset the taxpayer burden from the state and federal education mandates. If you believe the Board of Ed needs additional funding, then don't reduce their budget and let the voters decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Joseph Fallon, please.
Joseph Fallon, 17, Cobble Lane, New Milford. I think the town council made a tremendous mistake and is using reverse logic in trying to pass a budget by reducing the Board of Education as drastically as they did. This council saw presentation and they saw how little this council has increased the Board of Education budget over the last 10 years. The town of New Milford is at the bottom of its dirt for school funding. We try to accomplish what is almost impossible with so little money. And what I mean we, we the people who support the Board of Ed and the schools. You have already heard and I'll repeat it. The town council came to the Board of Education last year and asked us to help you. And we contributed back a significant amount of money to help the town and the council. And in return, you drastically slash our budget. The town is looking to go to the state health insurance fund. And they cannot do it without the Board of Education. And because of the dedication of several members at the Board of Education, we've got all the bargaining rooms to agree with so that this town can reduce incredible expenses in health insurance. And yet, you drastically cut our budget. Some people said we should be grateful we have $600,000 extra. And yet, it won't even cover our contractual obligations. So the cuts will be significant if the Board of Ed has to consider them. Let the people of the town decide what that budget should be. This town and this council, I know it, it's one of its biggest talking points, economic development, economic development, personnel, economic development, getting people to come into town. What does the council think is the very first thing people ask about when they look at this town to move their families to? They're worried and concerned, what are the schools like? What's that beautiful building on Route 70, as you've heard me say, so many people ask? That's our high school. That's what brings people in there. That's the first thing people ask, the families ask about, is what's the school system like? And yet, we're at the bottom of our dirt for comparative school districts. It's tragic. Does the council want to be known as not supporting education? Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. The end of the list, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Walter. Next, I'd like to go to Mayor's remarks. And I have a few. First, congratulations to the New Milford High School bowling team for their CIAA state tournament win. Congratulations. Congratulations to the New Milford hockey team. They won their first playoff game and then unfortunately didn't reach the second. Today, the boys' basketball team is in their quarterfinal game. Actually, it's playing right now versus Price Tech, so we wish them lots of luck in their game today. Also, the Green Wave swim team is at their state championships today, Southern Connecticut State University. So we wish them lots of luck as well. Also like to congratulate the paper, The Piper, which was recommended by the National Council of Teachers for superior ranking. So congratulations to them. I want to let you know that there's a Coffee with the Mayor. This will be this Saturday, 9:30 a.m. to 11:00. All are invited to come. It's a very relaxing atmosphere. Some of you have already been there. It's a great chance to sit down and chat. Also, yesterday I had the pleasure of wishing a happy birthday and being at Angie Perlowski's 101st birthday yesterday. So God bless to her and her family. Also downstairs, and they also have it at the VFW, but for people that can't get up that way, for worn and damaged US flags, you can now drop them off at Town Hall. We can properly have them retired. Also, the American Legion, too. Couple things also. I'd like to thank the public, the department heads, the chairman, the staff, the Board of Ed for presenting as well, the town council and the Board of Finance for all their hard work during the budget season. The process now moves so the public is aware to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance then makes their adjustments and it goes out to you, the public, to decide how you want your dollars spent and how much you want spent. Also, speaking of economic development, I'd like to congratulate our new hire. Her name is Karen Pollard. She's going to be our new economic development director. She comes from New Hampshire, Rochester, was able to bring $50 million worth of business into that town. So very excited to have her and look forward to her helping New Milford and being an integral part of that. Couple of other things, just for kind of housekeeping, so to speak. I had a few people ask the mayor's office and also ask our personnel department about the filming of the budget hearings. It was done by Mr. Mike Sinella. So I kind of like to set the record straight. I hired Mr. Sinella. Reason being was we have a very limited budget when it comes to filming these productions. We didn't have enough money to cover our filming for the rest of the year if we continued on with the same rate of pay that we have for filming. Mr. Sinella chose to do it at a reduced rate. He has great equipment, so bravo. We saved message and we were able to be transparent to our public. So I thank him for his service. I thank him for his hard work. Next, Matt, could you turn on the PowerPoint for me for a second? I have a couple of other things that as we were going through during the budget hearing, I kind of just want to... Yes, please. I just want to kind of set the, some of the things proper. So as we move forward. Yep, right there. It'll be where the normal presentations are. Should be Mayor's comments. Thanks, Matt. So, if you could click down to the second one. Yes, please. So what I'd like to do is if you could pass these out to Katie. Pass these out. So as mentioned during public participation, at one of our public participations, we started talking about the audit itself. And we talked, one of the people in the public talked about how there is a major issue with the audit and how the major issue could affect all sorts of things. So the first thing I want to let you know is when you talk about an audit and you talk about what's major and what's minor, when you talk about it and you say something and it isn't true, it can affect public perception. So I want to let the public know that guess what? The audit was done very well. As you can see here, there's a side-by-side view of the audit. So the first audit that went out to the town council and the Board of Finance was this one right here. It says version one. The next one, when it was made aware, Dr. Muller, thank you very much, who came in and said, there's a few mistakes in the audit. Here's number two. And for those that can't see, there, the numbers have always been the same. Where it says total, general government, have always been the same. Can you go to the next slide, Matt? Okay, so the next slide.
You used one of the fourth slide.
Yeah. So here's the next slide. These ones highlighted in yellow are the same ones. And they were just differences of department numbers. All these numbers are the same. They never changed at all. Then we go down to the total. You can see the total is the exact same, never changed. So I want the public to feel rest assured that there never was a major issue with an audit. All it was was just some differentials in here. And as a matter of fact, that I've given to the council, this was a letter from our auditor. And I'm going to read it. We're going to put it into the minutes as well. And he also came up to one council meeting, for those that didn't attend, and came up here and talked about it. Great news is, we got $2,500 bucks, thank you, Dr. Muller, for the mistake. So, "Dear Mayor Bass, you've requested that Mahoney and Sablin Company provide a letter to clarify the non-financial reporting error..." to clarify the non-financial reporting error that was identified in the town of New Milford's financial statements as of the year end of June 30, 2018." The financial statements. "The town's financial statements were released on January 29, 2019. Subsequent to the release of the financial statements, we were informed by you of an unintentional error in the labeling of certain expenditure categories, including in the schedule of expenditures and other financial usage. Budget and actual budgetary basis general fund the schedule presented on pages 73, 74, and 75. Third parties to which the financial statements have been available to, including the State of Connecticut, Office of Policy Management, the Town Council, and the Board of Finance of the town, were notified of the situation. The steps were taken by the management upon learning of the area were performed timely and communications and third parties were appropriate. The unintentional error was included in a schedule that is presented as required supplementary information and did not have an impact on the amounts reported in the town's basic financial statements. Required supplementary information is not a part of the basic financial statements, and the auditor's opinion on the basic financial statements does not cover required supplementary information. Accordingly, the correction of the schedule did not result in modification or change to our opinion of the town's financial statements. The schedule was subsequently corrected. The revised financial statements redistributed to all appropriate parties. Michael Van Deter. It was the order." So I just want the people to feel rest assured, because there was some public outcry that there was a big mistake in the audit. Next. One of the things we continue to talk about, and I want the public to feel very aware is, is what's facing the town of New Milford? All of us. All of us paying. What's facing us? We have our operations on both sides of the ledger. And I'd like to quantify quickly about our partnership that we have with the Board of Education. The town last year took on its efforts with ECS of $1.9 million. The town paid that. Okay? So the town had some skin in the game as well. So I want everybody to understand that. We're trying to work and resolve these problems together. I want everybody to understand what's going to be required between now and the next five to 10 years. So the Board of Finance and the Town Council get what's called their five-year capital plan. When we're looking at capital, let's first look at our road, roads. And these are not done by myself. These are done by the experts. These are done by the people that work at Public Works. So I'd like you to look at the capital road projects. And these are, these are roads that we're doing. These aren't all of our roads. We have 315 miles, 215 miles of roads that we have to do. As you can see, their budgeting for this year, $10 million. $10 million. It's a heck of a lot of money. It's not going to get you a lot of roads. Year after, $7 million. Year after, $5.7. Next year, $9. Next year, $8.5. So as the Roads Committee came to us before, the Municipal Roads Committee, John Whitman and company, were telling us, it's going to be about a $40 million ask to bring our roads up. Guess what? It's about where it is. Now, we have buildings. We have buildings in schools. We have a high school that we're talking about that needs a new roof. We have Saranoke that absolutely needs a new roof. On top of that, working with our Board of Ed partners, we talked about two other schools that were on deck, but because of what happened in May, they kind of got pushed off a little bit. And that's Hillen Plain, right? And that is Northfield. Now, in that capital building project right there, that's not included in there. So you're looking at $26 million there. We're looking at about $3.5 to $4 million for Saranoke. We're looking at anywhere depending on how we want to do the high school. We're going to do shingle over shingle, that's about $1 million. If you want to do solar, $5 million. Then you've got to add all the other two schools. And these have all got to get done. Capital bridge projects. I didn't know this until I got here, but I don't know if everybody else is going to go, "We have 63 bridges in this town." So we're working on how we're going to make sure, some of these bridges have to get done, or guess what's going to happen? We have a one-lane bridge. So I asked our Public Works team, "What are we looking at?" You're looking at it right there. $26 million bucks. Operating capital plan, that's for different types of machinery and other things, that's another $5 million. Vehicle replacement, that's another $4 million. Now, I tried to look online for the Board of Education's five-year capital plan. So I looked online, this is the only page that I saw, the only page on there. So that's their technology and facilities. That's another $3.4 million. Now, I want to show everybody, this was in our capital plan improvement plan for the town of New Milford. So we're looking at 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024. You can see this online, by the way. www.nu milford.org. Click Government. Click to the right. Down below, you're going to click two budgets on the left-hand side. Then you're going to click to 19 and, or 20, 19 and 20. And then you're going to click down, and then you're going to be able to see all of these presentations from everybody, plus our five-year capital plan. So we are looking at all together, year 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Total, $107 million, $125,856. Now, add on another capital request. Like I talked about before, high school roof, $1 million to $4.5 million. Depending on what we're going to do. Saranoke roof, $3.5 to $4 million. We're also looking at Hillen Plain School, Northfield School. We haven't had the calls yet. We're all going to work together. One of the things that we're going to be talking about tonight is our Municipal Building Committee that we're going to form. It's going to be a partnership with everyone. We're going to talk about how we can do these in a proper way. And there's a lot of other things to follow as well that we want to have. So I just want people to, to understand, I know it's a very high-pressure thing right around budget, but we have lots of things to look at as a town. A lot of things to be grateful for. We have a wonderful town. Hallmark town. Go outside and look, especially on a kind of snowy day, man, it would be a movie. And we do have great teachers. And we do have great parent educators. And we do have great parents. And we've got great people that work for this town. So now, we have to work together, all of us, knowing we have these headwinds, knowing we have operational issues that are before us, and knowing we have a big animal in the room, that's the state of Connecticut. $100 billion in the red. When you add your pension, $100 billion. So I'd like to tell the people on the town side, we have to look at how to do business in a totally different way now. Because the state isn't going to be helping us. You can see that by the initial cuts they give us every year. So we need to work now more together than ever to, to help with these challenges that are coming before us and to work hard to make it work for everybody. But I want everybody to see, this is, this is a big ask for everybody. But with the time in town that we have with everybody here in this room and outside of this room, I think it's a challenge that we can go for. But we need to know what's coming before us.
Can I speak?
Yes, Dr. Mull.
Do you have a minute?
Oh, yes, we're done. You can turn it off, Matt. Thank you. Next, I'd like to go to the consent agenda.
Move to approve item 4A and 4B on our consent agenda.
Walter?
Before I do, do the, your presentation, I know this sounds very trivial, but on page 2 of the minutes, we have two spellings for Scott Trenzler and Scott Presler. I assume it's just a typographical error. Mary Jane Mungrin and Jeff Winter.
Oh. I see. I think there's no Z. That's what I think is the error.
I got two different spellings. T-R-E-C.
One S.
Yeah, it's not, the S is right, Z is wrong.
So we'll make the change for that, Walter.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll make that change. So we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion besides Walter's adjustment to spelling? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 5A, move to approve all of 5A reappointments as listed for the Bike and River Trail Committee 2 and the Bar Planning Grant Program Steering Committee.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 5B, move to approve appointment to the Housing Partnership of Robert Bennett, an alternate for March 11, 2019, January 31, 2022, and the appointment of Harold Hill, filling a vacancy on the Library Modernization and Construction Committee, March 11, 2019 through July 9 of 2019.
Second. Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
July 9 is because you're going to be re-upping that every six months? Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item number 6, move to go into executive session to discuss a pending claim. Merrick and Tower Corp, the town of New Milford. We invite the town attorney and the tax assessor into executive session.
Could you just read the document?
I certainly could. I didn't know if you wanted that, Matt. That'd be docket number H-H-B, Harry, Harry Boyce, C-V as in Victor, 18-604-6304-S as in Sam.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Note that no motions were made and no votes were taken in executive session. Move on to item number 7. This is the mayor's discussion of Municipal Building Committee?
Correct. And what I'd like to do is pass out the naming process. This was something that we talked about concerning creating the Municipal Building Committee that will help with projects, both on the town side and the Board of Education side. As Dr. Tracy had stated, and we, yep, and we had talked about before, that if we could use some of the people in our community that have this type of experience and professionalism, it would help the town, both in getting the project done in a timely fashion and on or under budget. So this is kind of the first blush. Attorney Grine, would you like to speak about the, the verbiage?
Yeah. So several municipalities around the state sometimes do building committees by project, or they have a permanent or municipal building committee. So using the model ordinance that the state has provided several committees, that's how this ordinance came together. And it combines the, sort of the requirements of FOI, the requirements with respect to what needs to be filed with respect to municipal public buildings, and it sort of goes through that. You see a proposal date of 3/25, because I thought that if this was an endeavor the council wanted to take, we could get to a public hearing on 3/25, we'd probably actually have to take it on, on 4/8 now, so that would change. But this is from the model with some language out of the New Milford Charter that sort of makes, makes ours fit the glove. And one of the things that's, that's unique about this, that I said to the mayor earlier today, is that the, once the town decides to embark on a major capital project, like let's say, for example, it decided to renovate the New Milford Police Station, they would designate the Municipal Building Committee as the building committee for that project as opposed to having a committee appointed like the Library Modernization Committee. But for example, if the town down the road in 2025, 2030 is renovating the police station and Northfield School and maybe the high school all at the same time, and the Municipal Building Committee has those three projects on its plate and the Town Hall needs work, they could appoint a temporary committee for Town Hall if the council felt the Municipal Building Committee had too much on its plate with respect to those three projects. So there's the flexibility, but there's also the consistency. And like the Municipal Roads Committee, which utilizes the professional services of the Director of Public Works, the Municipal Building Committee would utilize the professional services of our town building official. Did that answer your question? No questions? Explanation.
You answered all my questions.
So this has nothing to do with utilization of the facilities or maintaining?
No, this is actually if we're going to be building, using a building project, that they would help facilitate the building.
As opposed to always doing it by per project, you have a building committee in place. Bethel has one, Brookfield has one, Newtown has what's called, they call theirs a public site and building committee. I believe New Fairfield does theirs by projects. But we're one of the, we seem to be more the exception than the norm without a permanent building committee in this municipality, in our area.
Any other questions?
No. Good idea.
What are your ideas?
They have a motion to kind of move forward to be the next step?
We don't, so as long as the council's okay with it, we can call a public hearing for April 8 and begin the formal process. So we don't need a motion for that. We can just...
Is that kind of the consensus of the group? Okay. Walter?
Good.
Dr. Mull?
Let me just understand the sequence before we go one step further. We're not voting on anything this evening?
No.
No, sir.
So that's number one.
Correct.
But don't we have to vote on something to send it to a town meeting? Or you're saying it's just consensus?
Well, so here's the process. So this is creating a new agency like the Municipal Roads Committee was. So we will have a public hearing like we do all ordinances. There can be amendments at the public hearing. Maybe we'll need to call a second one. And then the council will vote to approve the, whatever the ordinance has come up with at the public hearing, or turn it down. If the council approves the ordinance like it did the Municipal Roads Committee, then once the time runs out to petition, since this is creation of the new permanent commissioner or board, we'll have a town meeting to approve that board like we did for the Municipal Roads Committee.
All right. I'm fine with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Matt.
So we'll set this up as soon as we can.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Item 7B, move to refer for 824 to Planning Commission, an 824 referral, Planning Commission on the parcel of land to be gifted to the town of New Milford from Eagle Holdings Tax Lot 61-16.
So if you can come on up? So this was at our last...
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Matt. So this was at our last town council meeting. This was a piece of property that's up by Squash Hollow Road that was to be donated to the town, and Town Council requested some more information. So we're here tonight to talk a little bit more about the property and stuff.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
My name is Chris, C-H-R-I-S, Charles, C-H-A-R-L-E-S. And I'm representing the owner of the property, Evan Walters, Eagle Holding. Just a few comments. So my client would like to donate this 35 acres to the town of New Milford. In 2012, he donated 25 acres to the town. This is north of Troy Caves. And after that, he cleaned up the gravel mine. There were buried oil tanks, things of that nature. And then he was able to make a sale of that land to Scott Malati of Scott Landscaping. And Scott plans to develop that 22 acres for industrial condos. Anyway, these things have a way of taking a little longer than you think, but I'm finally back now to ask if the town is interested in receiving this land. I have been to the Conservation Commission twice. I think they've spoken to the Planning Commission. I spoke to Kathy Castignola simply because in the absence of an Economic Development officer, she seemed to be the closest thing to that. And of course, I've spoken with... And of course, I've spoken with the mayor. So I think the value of this property to the town is that it is sort of the central piece that would connect the Weyonog property and the 25 acres you already have. So it's 170 acres combined. This piece of land has the highest elevation of that whole area. It's got the most pristine wetlands. And it also has a significant portion of the Blue Trail, which was very important to the Conservation Commission back at the very beginning and to this day. The thing about this property is that it also has the level portion to the north of the current Tory Case access, which is really just the DOT right-of-way. So there's a potential in this piece of property of creating a safe access, in and out, parking, this sort of thing. So it really is the linchpin to that whole area. I was on the Northwest Conservation District Board. We were involved with the Indian Meadows property. And so I have a certain affection for this piece because it seems to me as you drive up Route 7 to have these elements of view shed, preserve, farmland, or passive evacuation, it's little nodes of these things all the way up. I think that in this process, the town would find that Scott Malati is a willing and, I mean, I don't want to speak for him. I'm just saying my experience of the guy is that he would be a good neighbor and there may be some opportunities for working in the parking area. Anyway, he would be a willing partner, I think. And then also, the area land trust was interested in the piece of land. I think they may have some assets that they could bring to this conversation. And my, I think the most important thing from my position, having been a planner in my town, Washington, for many years and involved in, I often say that one of the things that New Milford does that we should do is your economic development team is an excellent process for reviewing a piece of land and sort of determining what the best sort of comprehensive plan for something is. And I think that's something that the town of New Milford would bring to the table that a land trust can't do, all right? And so I think the town, in having the piece of land, would be able to take the lead in terms of thinking for the best use of the land. And the one thing my client would like would be, he's paid the taxes the whole time that he's owned the property. He would like to have the taxes from January 1, 2019, so this half of the year waived if possible. And we flagged the perimeter of the property with a, we'll see Ian Branson did that. So it's, once the snow melts, because it's pretty slippery and icy up there, it's, the perimeter is clearly defined. And my client would be willing to host a walk of the property with Ian if that would be something that the town would find helpful, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. Charles. You're here representing Eagle Holdings?
That's correct.
You're not the owner of the property?
No, I'm not the owner.
And you are a, just a friend of his or just an interested party or disinterested party?
Well, no, I work for Evan, okay?
Oh, I see. Okay. I wasn't sure where you put in there. Okay, my question is, this property's been on the tax rolls for how long?
Um, means Evan's ownership of the property?
Yeah.
I think it's since about 2010.
Okay, and has he ever tried to sell it?
Uh, no, he's never, I mean, he was approached by a land trust. The portion that he did sell was the 22 acres which he sold to Scott Malati.
Okay, and the abutting, you said it was Weyonog?
Tory Caves is owned by Weyonog, that's right, yeah.
And do they have any desire to have this to expand whatever they're doing on their abutting property?
They definitely would like it, but I, my client and the Weyonog were not able to come to terms on the property.
Okay, so I guess my question is, it's not buildable. I know the property that you're talking about, it's extremely sloped. I like that, all of the beautiful things he wrote here and the nice pictures. And there are some lovely hardwoods. I don't know about the classified as prime farmland or farmland of state-wide importance. I don't know how much of that, oh, 3.1 acres out of all of this. Anyway, I guess, what's the tax payment that's made on this property?
I'm going to apologize because I should have like brought that file with me. I believe it's $3,700 for the year.
I see.
The land is valued at $400,000.
Oh, really?
Right.
Thirty-six. So the idea here is that it's not been sold anyone and you feel that we could step in and be partners with Weyonog to turn it into something usable? I don't, I'm not, I guess I'm just missing out on the part of why you need New Milford.
Okay, so first of all, I think you have a different understanding of this piece of land than, I mean, it's, the access to it, initial access is not easy.
You're right.
But we worked through with an engineer to determine how to build a driveway into the property. When you get above the first several hundred feet, you come into a field which Ian refers to, and I think it's, I think he says it's about three acres. And that is bounded by stone walls and it's, you know, I'm not an agricultural expert, but he says it was a field. Then you get to an old logging road. And when you walk along the logging road, when we first did the deep hole tests of that whole area, the person doing the deep hole test said, "If you ever want to sell this property, I would like to buy it." Okay, so there are portions of the property that I think your characterization of it being not developable or easily buildable, is definitely correct. But there are portions of the property that I think are much, I mean, if you walk it, you'll see.
So I'm very familiar with it. I live in a very similar piece of property, not too far from there.
Okay.
So the deep hole testing was done because you were, someone was trying to determine whether it was saleable or buildable?
So the property originally, when the, the name of the property owner is, it had been approved for active adult housing, the lower portion. So that whole area, in order to get those permits, had the deep hole testing done. Part of what I do, because I've been in construction and also conservation amusement work for quite some time, when you have a piece of land that potentially could be given to a land trust or to a municipality, what you need to do is to prove the value of the land. And so a big part of that is the deceptive capacity of the soils. And how many building lots can you create and this sort of thing? And so at the very beginning of my involvement with the land, which would have been 2010, end of 2010, I began the process with an engineering firm, CCA, of basically going out and determining what the septic capacity and what the number of building lots potentially were for the whole property. And so that is also the basis, if you are not developing the land, it is also the basis for establishing the highest invest use, which sadly in this world is the financial value of the land for the, in this case, George Devos appraisal of the property.
And what was the outcome of all the testing? Was it viable soil?
Yes. Viable soils, yes.
On that three acres area there?
No, on the 35 acres.
I see.
So
And it's valued at $400,000?
The town says it's worth $400,000. That is what the client, my client has been paying taxes on. I think it's $416,000. But again, I apologize because I had that document and I didn't bring it with me.
But it has been offered for sale to the general public in the past?
The whole property was originally
Before you took off that?
Right, and what happened, I mean, one thing I can tell you is that we offered the whole property to a land trust at one point. They said they would love to take everything except for the mine area. So at that point, we determined to clean that up. And in fact, after having given the first 25 acres to New Milford in 2012, we then worked through a process with Scott Malati where he purchased the land. And he has, I believe, the permits to develop it for his then. Now we have the remaining 35 acres, which have never been on the market by themselves, okay?
Okay.
And basically, I may have been the strongest proponent for not developing them, but for, you know, I mean, it really is the sort of the hub of all those parcels. Yes, sir?
So is the mine the only reason that the land trust didn't want to take it or?
All I can tell you is when I made a site visit with Harry White and the current director, it was her first day and she was really under the weather. Harry was like, "We want it all, except for the mine area." So.
Any other questions?
I'd like to have, do a little more checking on this myself. Get a little more information from our records and the history of the property because it's lovely that people like to donate. However, if it's 35 acres that the town can't do anything with and in order to do something with it would cost us money, you were sitting here earlier and I think you have the gist that we don't really have a lot of money. And I mean, it's beautiful property, but then that becomes a liability. You know, insurance is needed and what will people do with it? And I think there's some other things that I would like to, and my fellow councilmen probably, and we have several that are not here tonight, who might like to just get a little more information. And if we wanted that, would we get that from you or Branson Forestry?
No, you would get it from me. And basically, essentially, whatever you need, I will try to provide from the owner, from, you know, Ian, if you would like to do the site visit or if anybody would like to. My clients will only pay to have Ian there to conduct that. As I said, all of the boundaries have been flagged. Anyway, so.
What's the town right now doing with that piece up here that we tried, oh, it's open space?
It's open space.
It is a nice piece of land, but it ties a lot.
So if anybody has any questions?
I have that one more.
So just so that I understand it, because I was just in with this. So there's a mine on these, on this particular 35 acres and Weyonog doesn't want that because of that?
Okay, so the
Am I seeing that right?
As I, as I, my experience was that when they were approached back in 2010 or 2011 with possibility of receiving all the land, so 82, 84 acres, was that they were not interested in the gravel mined area.
Is the gravel mined area in this 35 acres?
No, that's a separate 22-acre parcel which my client cleaned up.
Yeah, so here's my next question. Why wouldn't he just donate it to Weyonog? Can they not agree on a, on a number?
I wasn't a part of that negotiation, but as I understand it, basically, my client was not able to get to a number with them. One and two, I think there's also that there's a deed restriction of some sort which says that whoever owns the 35 acres cannot oppose the development of the 22 acres. And so I think that might be something that they felt as a land trust that they could not, you know.
Seems like
So we can check all these things?
Yeah, we can contact and ask them what their thoughts are too.
Yeah, and, you know, to the, from my perspective with a piece of land, you, if you've got 100 acres and it could be 25-acre building lots, I think there's a lot of value in trying to concentrate the development on a small portion of that property to leave the bulk of it open. And I think as we go forward, you know, with sustainability and resilience and things like that, that something, that sort of, you know, development planning is actually a positive. So yes, the town of New Milford, for the moment, will lose the tax benefit on the 35 acres. But I know that Scott is very dedicated to realizing his vision on his piece of land. Ultimately, that would hopefully offset the loss of the open space.
I got one more question for you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know, Evan's been on the council long enough. If this gentleman that wants to donate the particular piece of property, do we back date taxes like that? I've never heard of that before.
I don't know if there's a precedent to do that, but
Because he's, this gentleman's January 1st, I mean, we're already
I could find out for you.
March 15th.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we can gather a lot of information? And we have our other council people here too, you agree with that?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not ready to vote on this this evening. I do have some questions. I'll just email them to Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, so I withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you.
I would note relative to the taxes that, I'm not as familiar with 490 in New Milford as I am in other towns, but nobody ever placed, this property was not put under 490. And having had the property for over 10 years, that would have been a complete loss for the town. So I do think that there's been an effort. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So I'll withdraw my motion, Mayor?
Yep, and we'll get the information to the council.
I'm withdrawing my motion.
Postpone that.
You want to postpone it? I'd like to just withdraw it until, there's no reason. In case we find things, we don't want to do anything. I'm withdrawing my motion.
Yep.
Okay, so item 7C. This is a discussion and possible action on a grant policy.
Okay. So when the council was looking at some of our grant opportunities, one of them being the sidewalks, the council thought of looking to change the policy to where prior to us accepting an application, that we needed to know where the town's share would be coming from. So I've asked Tammy Reardon, our grant writer, to come up with kind of the thought process with that. So if you guys could take a look at it in the next meeting, what other questions you have, you could send it in the mayor's office or we can talk about it at the next meeting. But we can begin to take work on creating this policy so that moving forward, we know where actually the funding source for the town's portion would be.
So it's like to postpone this motion?
Oh, just
Well, it was listed as possible action.
It could say possible action. I don't think we should entertain any action. We should just review this and bring it back.
Fine.
Yep.
Great, okay. Item 7D, the memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
As it pertains for the projected ECS grant reduction of $444,831 and the town's teacher retirement contributions of $173,546.
Does everybody have a copy of the MOU? Okay, so when we were going through our, the council going through budget deliberations, when talking about adjustments to the Board of Education, it was, one of the council members had spoken on, could we create a memorandum of understanding as if Governor Lamont's bill is going through or his budget going through the process of the state were to change and we were to get more funding or all funding from the ECS and for the teachers' retirement, we would make a conscientious effort as a council to make sure those funds went back to the Board of Education. to the Board of Education. So we talked about that at our meeting, about creating an MOU. Here's the MOU for us to take a look at and opine. My thing for discussion was obviously for the council to discuss, and the possible action was, does the council want to continue to look at this? Because if they do, we continue to kind of go through this process with any discussion that you may have. And after that, I would also like to then, if this is something to move forward, is to talk to our Board of Ed partners as well about how all this could work. So this is kind of the first step in the process of how to make all of this work.
My question is more for Matt. This, this is completely legal?
You know, I haven't been asked to review it yet. I'm sure I'll be asked to review it tomorrow, and we'll let you know about that.
Okay, that's my next question.
Katie?
Just so I understand, so this, in essence, is what came up the other night, that if the state of Connecticut were to not reduce ECS as much as we were told it would be reduced, let's for argument's sake, say there was $100,000 less taken away from us, that we would take that income, which would be income at that time, and turn it over to the Board of Ed? Is that correct? We have a, a way to do that, right? As a way to transfer?
We would make sure and talk with the Board of Ed, because there are some questions, as well as Greg, our finance director, Anthony, their director, and figure out a way how that would, would work. What would that look like?
So, but the, but you're potentially positive that can work, in some way, shape, or form? So it would go back to the Board of Ed then?
Right.
Okay.
Are we, so we're not really going, doing too much with this tonight, it's more-
Tonight, I just wanted to get a consensus from the council, is this something we should still look to explore to do?
I think so.
If we're looking to explore, obviously, we come back at the next meeting with some more information. Then I would know that the council had some interest. I could talk to the chairman of the Board of Ed, Mr. Lawson, who happens to be sitting in the audience, and Tammy, who happens to be sitting in the audience. And we could see if there was an opportunity and let them also opine on it as well. Walter?
With this, of course, there's some kind of problem without, Megan, where's my, Megan, you still have, oh, I have my glasses on.
Okay. I was kind of surprised you said my name, okay? Were you going with this, Walter?
Without some kind of public input?
I actually gave Megan a copy of the MOU, because I got it this afternoon, and-
I have a copy now. I got it at the same time.
But we're not voting today, so we have plenty of time.
We're not voting on anything today?
That was my, I saw it listed as possible action already tonight, instead of just discussion. And I wanted to make sure that there was time for the vote to react. But it's got to go through you again, and for them, and there's plenty of time.
Dr. Mullin?
In a certain way, this isn't needed if the Board of Finance changes the amount of money that's going to go out to the town for a vote. So, got this information tonight. I think we need a lot more discussion between town, Board of Ed, and see what the Board of Finance does before we do anything. Thank you.
I, I agree with that.
Yep.
Just a, just a point, I, I so agree with that. So the $618,377,000, that's the number that the state has cut from the education.
Reduction in the revenue that they were giving us.
So magically, Connecticut finds this money and says, okay, New Milford, here's your $618,000 back. So what we're saying is that we simply turn it over to the Board of Ed. So what you're saying, Dr. Mullin, is a little bit too soon, because we don't know. Maybe the Board of Finance will give the Board of Ed a 2.5% increase, and this will be a moot point. Is that what you're saying? Got it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. I think there isn't any. I'll talk to Mr. Lawson. Next.
Okay, item eight, move to approve the road closure for the Moonlight Run. I think everyone has in their packet the Moonlight Run.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I'd like to add an item to the agenda, item nine, the settlement of a legal matter. Make a motion to approve the terms of the settlement discussed in executive session with respect to American Tower Corporation v Town and New Milford. Docket number HHB, Harry, Harry Boy, CV, Charlie Victor 18, dash 604, 6304, dash S, and authorize the mayor to execute a mutual release.
Okay.
Katie, can I jump in here for a second? Was that a motion to add something to the agenda, or was that a motion to approve what was discussed?
I made a motion to add to the agenda, item number nine, and move to approve the terms.
So we're voting on both at the same time?
Yes, I believe that's a free-
You can, I mean, you, you can vote.
Would you rather separate them?
Let's separate them, maybe.
Would you rather separate them?
I, I don't have a preference, as long as we're doing it by the book. In the past, I always thought it was separated, but we don't, Katie, if we don't have to, I don't have an issue with it. I was just asking to make sure we had it right.
What would you say, attorney?
That's practice, do two motions.
Okay, so I-
I don't need to be a stickler, but I don't want to have this-
No, that's fine. Well, add to the agenda, item number nine, settlement of a legal matter.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now I move the motion to approve the terms of the settlement discussed, et cetera. Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everybody.